It's four o'clock. In fact, it's 4:01. I'd like to call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners to order on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. Could you take the role, please?
Fox, here, Krieger.
Yes.
Begic, Coonan.
Mo Goodskis.
Do we get support?
Ernie?
I'll support that.
Okay, who's, oh, yeah.
Uh, Coonan.
Here.
Radke, here. Johnson.
Here.
Herrick.
Here. Please stand for the invocation and the.
Lord, we ask that you grant to this Board of Commissioners and all those in authority the patience and understanding to work together for the good of all people. In your holy name, we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Before I forget, there was a motion to excuse Commissioner Begic. Was there a second on there?
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? Thank you. First, we have minutes from 5:17:22.
So, support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries. Next will be citizen input. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the board, uh, right in the camera, so now would be the time to do it. Okay, perfect. Seeing no one, on to petitions and communications. So Charter Communications broadband presentation with Marilyn Passmore, the State Director of Government Affairs, and Karen Coronado, manager of state government affairs in Michigan, will provide the broadband information and updates.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. My name is Marilyn Passmore. I'm the State Director for Charter Government Affairs for Michigan. Charter's our company, Spectrum is our brand, so you'll hear me use those words interchangeably. Joining me is Karen Coronado. Karen is our East Michigan manager for government affairs and had a conversation recently with county executive, Mr. Barsha, and shared some good information with him, and he thought that would be something to come back and fill in the board. So that's why we're here today. Um, did you have your hand?
Nope.
Oh, I thought it was gonna pause me. So with that, I just want to.
You'll know it when I ask a question.
Perfect. So I want to provide some background on the company and also some of the things that we're doing in the county, in the state, and across the nation. So Charter is the fourth-largest broadband company in the country, and we serve over 32 million customers in 41 states. We have 93,000-plus U.S.-based employees, about 14% are U.S. veterans, and of that workforce, 1,700 are here in Michigan, about 100 in Bay County. So we are a local employer, and our employees live and work and play in Bay County. On an ongoing basis, our network passes over 53 million addresses, meaning homes and businesses, but only 32 million actually take the service. So there's a pretty big gap in terms of people that could connect and take our mobile service, our voice service, our cable television service, and our internet service. But I'll talk about adoption a little bit later. On an ongoing basis, about 450 million devices are connected to our network every day. So you think about all the things in your house, right, that use internet, whether it's a smart appliance, it's your mobile device, it's your television, smart TVs, things of that, tablets. If you've got kids at home, you know they're data hogs and use a lot more bandwidth. So 450 million devices on an ongoing basis, and this is, this is not slowing us down. In the pandemic, we had to pivot from our folks doing install to self-installs, because think about it, customers didn't really want people in their home, right, during the height of the pandemic. So we had to pivot to having self-installs. From an infrastructure and technology investment perspective, we've invested over $40 billion in the past five years in our network. It takes a lot of money, a lot of people, to do what we do, not just from an expansion and maintaining the network perspective, but to think about things like cybersecurity, right, as the county works to secure all of your connections. And one simple click on a phishing email can bring a county down, and we've seen that personally in talking to some of our county partners. In the past three years, we've invested $2.5 million in businesses and homes. A third of that's been in rural markets. So in Michigan, just to give an example, we operate as far north as the Kewanaw Peninsula, as far south as Monroe, and all the way around again. And all of the communities that we serve have gigabit service to the home today and have had that since 2019. So we're very, very proud of that. Of that expansion, in 2021, we extended our network to another 26,000 Michigan homes and businesses, and we did that in a pandemic, and that was not an easy lift. So these represent our minimum residential download speeds. And when I started with the company 20-plus years ago, I remember when we first launched 1-meg service, right, and everybody was using 356 or 285. 1-meg just seemed like massive. And then, over time, obviously, in response to demand, we started increasing our speeds. And you can see in 2012, when the iPhone was introduced, and all of a sudden, the demand started to pop, right? So several months ago, we just doubled our starting speed from 100 to 200. So if you're a Spectrum customer, you don't have to do anything. You will get that increase for free. And I just learned yesterday that we have another speed lift coming in a week, and we're gonna go, our starting speed will be 300. So just to give an example, we offer residential customers today 200, 400, and a gigabit. After next week, it'll be 300, 500, and a gigabit. Again, not everybody takes it. Most people that are our customers use that slower speed, but it's really not very slow when you think about 200, especially going now to 300. Again, those are our minimum speeds. So what I wanted to talk about today specifically is the FCC Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, otherwise known as ARDOF. And this is an initiative that actually started before the pandemic. The FCC set aside unspent universal service charges. You recall having those on your phone bill? And they set up what was known as a reverse auction, where companies could bid for the right to serve unserved census blocks. And we did win some funding in your county. Not a lot, but we did win some. So if you're a company that bid for funding, there's a couple of things that we had to play by. You have to provide broadband and voice service. We set the schedule, not the FCC, but the FCC has the authority to then claw back that funding if a provider doesn't deploy in a certain timeframe. There are annual reports and milestones that we have to meet, and we get six years to do our bills. Case in Bay County, we didn't get a large amount, but what we did, we've already built it. We're already done. So we're moving on to the next areas. So, very exciting, and, you know, the companies have to be well-funded to actually deploy as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
How much money did you guys get?
Uh, $1.2 billion. Charter's investing $5.
So was, that's not chump change, then, isn't it?
No, no, no. And our investment, I mean, we're in 41 states. The investment is actually expanding us, our footprint in 24 states, which is my next slide.
Where did you build in Bay County?
I'm gonna get to that in just a moment. So at this slide, in the gray, shows our existing network. We have about 750,000 miles of network today in the, in the United States. We're adding another 115,000 miles of network, and that's shown in that royal blue. And so you can kind of see that it's concentrated in the mid to lower southeast part of the country. There's a little bit up in the Pacific Northwest, but most of our winning, where we bid, was in the central United States. So how does that look for Bay County? Here, here we go. We were awarded funding to 17 unserved addresses in one particular census block, but we built to 45. We built over five miles of network, because as we move along, every home we pass has access to that network. They may be counted as served already, but if we're moving by them with our fiber network, and this is all fiber to the home, 1,000 by 500, they'll have access to that service. So to answer your question, Commissioner, specifically the bill that we did in Bay County is in Williams Township. We already had existing network there, and then we expanded through that ARDOF win. And then lower on the slide are all of the communities that we offer service in today in Bay County. And again, gigabit service is already there. We, we are a provider of that speed. Yes?
And I see you have support of township.
Pardon?
Mentioned.
Yes.
Quartz of the township. We recently met with a young lady who lives out there, lives on one of the courts. It's a dead end with the cul-de-sac, and to get it, I think, from Pine down, you know, I think you sent some staff, oh, you didn't, but Spectrum did.
We did, yeah.
$72,000.
Yeah.
Extended to her home for one, one residence.
Yes. So when I talked about that $40 billion investment, because we built our network, right, we didn't have any state or federal funding. We built the network. We continued to reinvest in the network. And generally speaking, you'll see our network kind of where the population is, and we can extend, and we have done a lot of extensions over the years, but as a general rule, it's about 70,000 a mile for fiber. So that's not an uncommon, it sounds crazy, I get it, because people are like, well, I bought this property, right, and I'm out here, and I'm only half a mile, but half a mile is a considerable amount of investment to expand the network. So we will invest in expanding our network. To give you an example, years ago, our investment per customer we would spend was about $600. Today, we will invest up to $3,000. So we will offset the pricing to extend our services further. But again, think about what I said at the top of my presentation. Not everybody takes it. On average, before the pandemic, our take rate was about 50%. So it takes a lot of capital to then hopefully get customer return. The other piece of it is, we don't have contracts. We don't have data caps. There's no modem fees. So people do jump on and off. They take the service, then they disconnect and go to somewhere else, then they come back, or maybe they go north to their lake house, or whatever that may be. So we do see a lot of fluidity in the market, less so with the pandemic. And you would think, oh, my gosh, everybody would take the service, but it's just not true. So that brings me to broadband adoption. So I wanted to talk about some programs that we have in place and that also that the FCC is doing, and that's what these handouts are. The first one with the computer on it is our low-cost broadband. We've had this in place since 2016. It's almost six years. We launched it in the fall of 2016. This offers a 30-megabit service for $17.99 a month, no contract, no data fee, modems included, security suites included. And so think about who would qualify for this. This is for low-income students, so kids on free and reduced lunch, and low-income seniors, right? So that, that's an ongoing offer we've had available. During the course of the pandemic, we launched a program called Stay Connected, which essentially lets schools bulk buy broadband through their CARES Act funding. We've got Spectrum Community Solutions, same kind of an idea. They can bulk buy, pardon me, community broadband, like in HUD housing, student housing, senior housing, things of that nature. We can offer a community solution. We also.
What does bulk buy mean?
Bulk buy, meaning an entity, like a facility that houses HUD unit, for example, could purchase from Charter the service to provide to everybody who's in that property.
So a school could buy broadband for, what, all of their student addresses?
Yes, provided they're in a serviceable charter area, and that's what's under the Stay Connected program. Yep. So we, we have that offer. And then we also have offered digital education grants, and those are opportunities for nonprofits to, that are doing things with like digital literacy, helping seniors get online safely, helping folks understand how to use the internet safely and take advantage of these low-cost offers. One of the handouts that I gave you is the FCC Affordable Broadband Program. This looks like this. It says FCC on it. And we're participating. We're one of, I think it's 100 companies in the state that are participating. But essentially, what the FCC program is, is $30 off the cost of your connectivity, regardless of the type of connection. So it doesn't have to be through, say, a cable provider. It could be through Verizon. It could be through fixed wireless. It could be through satellite. There's a lot of companies that are participating in this. And this has an even broader way to qualify. Veterans would qualify. People on food stamps qualify. Low-income students, low-income seniors. So mostly just wanting to make you aware of that, because that's a, you know, a pretty substantial offer that's out there. And we, we did the research, and it's only 5% of the county is participating in ACP. So we also brought the Spectrum flyer, which is, you know, just saying that, hey, we're, we're taking part in it. People can qualify for our service, and, you know, with that offset, the service would be free, regardless if it's the low cost or the discounted. Yes?
We budgeted for a broadband assessment fee within the company. Does Charter know where we are weak and where we, throughout the county, where we would need to have an upgrade so that people can have suitable speed?
Do we know where the gaps are?
Right.
Yes. Yeah. We've done that analysis, and I know that Karen had shared some of that information with the county executive. I can't go into the costing in a public forum, but we have done the analysis to see, okay, for all the ARDOF winners, there's other companies that won a lot more than we did in your county. There's also some companies that won funding through the Michigan Departments of Broadband Grants, and there are a host of other opportunities that are happening. So we looked at all of that and said, okay, well, what's left, right? Where are the gaps? And then what would it cost for us to go further? So we have those pricing, you know, we can have a side conversation, again, not in a public forum.
It'd be nice just to know where they're at.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'm not sure who was doing our assessment.
Yeah.
It's gonna be the state, the state.
State, yeah.
Eighty-three counties.
Connect, Connected Nation or Connect Michigan?
That information should be the same information that you have.
It should be. It should be similar. There, what you're talking about is the, the state contracted with a company called Connect Michigan. We've worked with them over the years and won awards to them for our broadband expansion work. But they're literally driving around the state, county by county, and looking at where is their cable, where is their fiber, where is their fixed wireless, things of that nature, and then they're going to report that back to the governor's office, I think, sometime this fall or maybe in the spring. I'm not sure of the timeline.
Yeah. And will be notified.
Yeah.
When they do Bay County, the sheriff and the county government.
Yeah.
So people be curious why people are probably.
Yes.
In their neighborhoods.
Yes.
But, but 68,000 miles, I believe, in Michigan.
Yeah, it's a lot. Yeah.
And they'll identify underserved, unserved.
Right.
And served.
Right, exactly. So again, our network passes far more homes than actually take the service, but that's another reason we have a low-cost offer, because sometimes the reason somebody doesn't use broadband is they, they don't, they can't afford it. And maybe they don't realize, and maybe you have constituents in your base that could qualify and don't realize that they might have access to our network at a reduced price, whether it's through that FCC program or existing low-cost offer. And those are available and have been available. So again, way more information than you're gonna be able to digest, but that's why we like to talk about it, because, you know, we look at broadband as the three-legged stool. Yes, access is important, but it's also literacy, right? Who's using it? Who understands how to use it? Who feels comfortable and safe using it? Example, we did a partnership in Cadillac with the seniors organization. We gave them a grant. We gave them, I think it was eight or 10 tablets, and we had a digital safety day with the seniors there. We brought in the local sheriff, and we walked through, you know, being online safely, like, don't just close your browser, rather, log out of your bank account, things, things like that. I mean, it sounds, you know, not to make it oversimplified, but little things like that, that people felt uncomfortable, so they just weren't using it. The happy news about that partnership is, that was in 2019. Pandemic happened. Cadillac seniors loaned out all their tablets to homebound seniors, and then seniors who had done the training felt comfortable FaceTiming, learning how, and being able to connect with family that they physically couldn't see because we were all locked down, right? So that's just an example of some of the things that we try to do as a company. It's, it's not just the access, it's adoption and use, you know, literacy really are, are big issues. So, so here's a picture of an event we just did a couple weeks ago, right here in Bay City. In fact, right down the road, when I got off the, the main drag coming into town, I'm like, hey, there's Good Samaritan Rescue Ministry. So this was an event that we did. The lady standing next to me is a long-term employee. She had been a volunteer with the homeless mission, and we have a program by which employees who volunteered with a nonprofit for at least a year can nominate that nonprofit to win a broadband grant, or pardon me, just a general use grant. And so we gave them $2,500 and had a great tour of their facility, some of our employees there with Quentin Gross from Senator Peter's office, and then Dan Streeter, the CEO of the rescue mission. And that was just a couple weeks ago. So again, just a few of the things that we do. We're active in the community as far as veterans events. We've done an event in Pinconning. We've had events across the state, again, to talk about digital literacy. But again, with the pandemic, that kind of slowed us down. So other opportunities to expand, and going back to some of the other questions, I mean, we have partnered with counties, with tribes, using the NTIA funding sources that are available. We know that the BEAD funding is coming, the $42.5 billion is a lot of money, a breathtaking amount of money coming in. The state has had a successful broadband grant program, and we have been successful in that. We applied for eight grants. We won seven. And more than 50% are already complete, and we've got folks, you know, already connected. So it's very exciting. And so with that coming, this fall will be the next round of broadband grants through the Whitmer administration, and those will be housed in a newly-formed office, the Michigan High Speed Internet Office. So I haven't heard an announcement of who's leading it, but I know that's coming. Go ahead.
Yeah. We're excited about that, that new commissioner council, and our former drain commissioner will be working in that office. So hopefully, he'll, he'll help us a little bit in Bay County there.
Absolutely.
Remember his roots back here, yeah.
Yep. And then lastly, at the local level, we can, you know, we can partner with local communities and have on using their ARPA dollars. So to your question about, you know, doing extensions and things of that nature. The challenge, I think, for the local units of government is, how do they, how do they use funding to only benefit a portion of their town versus what about the rest of the town? And I know that puts them in a tough spot, but, so we can have those conversations, and we have them across the state. So that's really our presentation in a nutshell. We wanted to make, make you aware of all the great things the company's doing, and some of these federal programs, the charter programs, and we're happy, Karen and I are happy to take questions, if you have any questions of us.
I do. My thoughts aren't, aren't super great, but I heard you say, you know, you're investing where the people are. For me and the area I represent personally, there is not huge pockets of people, so it's Northern Bay County. So does Charter have any plan to, um, secure some of that and all of these funding opportunities going forward, or are you, that's just not part of your plan?
So I, so kind of a two-part answer. There was a provider that was awarded a lot of funding in Northern Bay County. Is it Mercury? Mercury Broadband is the company. They received a lot of funding across the state, so I would encourage folks to be talking with them. We're, happen to be way out in front, and we're being pretty aggressive about our build program. So we're not gonna go build where somebody else is getting federal tax dollars, and that's just not gonna be our, our principle. Having said that, I mean, of 85% of the communities that we serve have less than 2,000 households. So we are a rural provider, and, you know, we're, we're not going to be to every farm, and I'm a farm kid, so I get it. And our infrastructure is set that we have to follow FCC rules, even where we are in the road right-of-way, you can only connect to a certain point distance from that connection point. So again, as I mentioned earlier, if somebody says to me, well, Marilyn, I'm only half a mile off the road, well, that's still a considerable cost. And so when we're looking at two or three homes a mile, at 70,000 a mile, it's difficult to make a business decision. So that's my two-part answer, is that, one, the FCC program, I think, really will help those greatly unserved areas, like you're mentioning in Northern Bay County. And I know that there's been some conversations at the local level about getting Mercury Broadband in there to kind of give you an update on what are they coming, what are they doing, right? But again, we, we're not gonna take, we're not gonna ask for federal money to go overbuild another provider that's getting federal money. It just defeats the purpose. So hopefully, that answers your question, kind of. Okay, anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us. I appreciate it. You have a good rest of the evening. Thank you.
Like a motion to receive the presentation?
Some more.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Item B, Mary Herr, application for appointment to Bay County Library Board. Motion to receive.
Scene, court.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. And from James Anderson, his resignation as Bay County's representative on the Midstate Health Network Substance Abuse Disorder Oversight Policy Board. Motion to receive.
Move.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Next will be the force, resolutions of committees. Commissioner Fox.
All right. Resolution 2022-119, the tear down of the communications tower. I move that resolution?
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-120, the IVE program, the consulting services agreement with MGT of American Consulting. I move that resolution. Support?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-121, Homeland Security Grant Funding.
So move. Oh, you're moving it.
I move that resolution.
I'll support.
Sorry. Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Okay. Resolution number 2022-122, the Accessible Spotting Scope Grant from the Bay Area Community Foundation. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-123, the Region 7 Area Agency on Aging, their funding award. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-124, the adjusted grant amounts for homemaking and home-delivered meals. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-125, the payables. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-126, the Community Center Roof Project. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
And resolution number 2022-127, the waiver of the EFT policy for the Household Assistance Program. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Back to you.
All righty, thank you. And now from Personnel and Human Services, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, sir. We'll start with resolution number 2022-128, replacement of a day treatment assistant position with an intensive probation officer position. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-129, ARPA funding award from Region 7 Area Agency on Aging. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Resolution number 2022-130, master agreement with the state
DHHS for fiscal year 2022, 2023. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-131, Title 10 Grant for the Health Department. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-132, purchase of active military time for retirement purposes for Ronnie Johnson. Move this resolution?
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
All right. And then I would like to amend resolution number 2022-133, so that it reads vacancies at 911 Central Dispatch, Health Department with the WIC program, and Secretary to the Clerk. to the Clerk. I move this resolution?
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
And then we would hand it off to Commissioner B. Gick, but he is not here at this time.
We're going to hand off to Commissioner Fox.
There we go.
All right, Resolution number 2022-134, reports of the county executive, you move that resolution? Support.
Discussion.
Anybody, anybody?
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
And Resolution number 2022-135, the ratification of six collective bargaining agreements, which are more specifically stated in the resolution, I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. Commissioner Johnson.
Just, just want to say thank you to all the people that participated in all of the bargaining that, that went on and, and the fact that we could get this done, so, so we can move forward with the, with the rest of the summer, everybody can get back to what it is they would normally be doing.
Good job, Jeff.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, thank you.
I think we're about six months ahead of schedule on these, so, so everybody's, like you said, everybody's doing a great job. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Is this still me? Okay.
All set?
I'm done.
I know.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. You did wonderful. Next, we have reports of the county executive.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to be a compliment to our great new finance director and her staff, as well as the other Laura Ogier and other members of the county staff who participated in putting together the Bay County Housing Assistance Program, thank the Bay County Board of Commissioners for the $1 million of ARPA funding they appropriated to help our residents who are struggling financially with paying unpaid or catching up on their property taxes, mortgages payments or rent, as well as utility bills. And it's kind of a specific program, there are, as I mentioned, up to $3,000, but there's also sort of income levels that are involved, to make sure that, that money is targeted to those people who need it most, but wondering if Shawna, while raping, would want to give a more detailed explanation perhaps?
Sure, we're excited we're launching tomorrow, so tomorrow you can go to the Bay County homepage or call the number on the flyer, which for those watching at home is 989-895-4297. Again, 989-895-4297, and we will get you an application, or you can print one off online, you can complete it online, you can get it from our New County Treasurer Weston Prince's office, and then we're asking people to mail them in, email them in, the treasurer has a Dropbox in the back of the building, and then we'll start processing from there. There'll be one-time awards of up to $3,000. There are certain income limits and COVID impacts that people had to have experienced in order to receive the funds, but we're excited to launch the program and we encourage anyone eligible to apply. Thank you.
You.
All set?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. So unfinished business, we have the appointment of, to the Bay County DHHS Board of Francis DeWise, and we waited because of the eligibility, so there's no conflict of interest from the, our attorney was going to check on that, and do we know anything yet or no?
I'm going to check with Amber and get, and I'll have her get back to you on that, on that issue.
So we can't, so we can't appoint her yet?
No.
We did, we kind of did pending the outcome of this.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I, I know she is working on it, so as soon as, as soon as she gets some decision, then we'll update the board.
All right, all right. And under B, we have the, oh, let me, let me do one other thing first. Let's do the, how about if we, we received the, the, the appointment for, from Mary Herr, received her application and the appointment, she's the only, she is the only applicant, so if we can have a motion to appoint Mary Herr to the Board of County.
Motion.
I report, okay, thank you.
For her.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, okay, so we got, that's all done. So now let's go to the status of vacancies of the Board Commissioners' office and the financial analysts, the, our board coordinator, and so we'll, I guess we, you're, you're on stage.
Sure, I have sent around the proposed job descriptions to the board at this point, and I think we've incorporated all of the feedback with the exception of one additional feedback item that we received today with the board analyst position in reference to some bonds, so we would propose with the board analyst position that we would add language somewhere around the lines of serves as project manager for the Bay County Building Authority projects, which is where I believe the former analyst spent some time on bonds, but at this point, I believe we're waiting for the board to make a determination if they're comfortable with these job descriptions and ready to move forward with posting.
You make a motion that we post and fill the board coordinator's position, and we can wait on the other till you get that information on the analysts.
I'm sorry, what information are you waiting for on the board?
Well, you said on the analyst, you were waiting to put something in, some additional information on the analyst, right?
Just that one feedback from today that we received that I mentioned.
Oh, okay, you're comfortable with posting and filling both of them?
I am.
All right, that's my motion, and the post and fill of the board coordinator and the financial analyst.
Support.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I am, go ahead.
Okay, are these, are these full-time? What is it?
No, the board coordinator position would be full-time, the board analyst position would be part-time, up to 29 hours per week. It would be flexible, obviously, sometimes they work more in a week and sometimes they work less, that is an increase as the board analyst position was previously at 1,000 hours a year, and this would go up to about 1,560 hours, and then the board coordinator position is recommended at full-time, which would be 40 hours a week.
Commissioner.
The question that I had refers back to the, to the analyst, that he'll have some background in dealing with bonds, that, that's in there.
Background dealing with bonds or on the job description of the essential functions you want, the bond language?
Functions.
Under the essential functions?
Yes.
Yep, I'll make that change, that was based on some feedback that we recently received, yeah.
That was intricate on bonds and saved us thousands of dollars, so.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question relative to the motion. So post I get, if we don't get candidates or anyone applied for that is, meets, checks most of the boxes, does your motion require us to fill it regardless?
Well, obviously somebody, if nobody applies for it, you're not going to fill it, so I would think that we would be able to post it, who's going to determine whether they're, what their, their credentials are, it's going to be us here, so we're going to evaluate those individuals and make that determination, but sooner or later, we got to, we got to get rolling on this, post it, see, and fill it, and we make that decision here.
No, I understand that, I just want to ensure that the motion doesn't require us to fill it with a candidate we might deem not quite qualified enough, that's all.
We don't have to hire them.
Okay, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Are you proposing that, that any candidate who signs up comes to us, or do they go, are they going through personnel? That's, that's, I guess, I don't understand.
That's our position, I mean, personnel must be involved, that's great.
I mean, would you like her, would you like her to screen the candidates, to screen, I mean, if there's 10 candidates and, and she says, well, there's only, like, six of them have, she deems them not worthy, do you still want to bring those six in here, is what I'm saying?
It's fine with me, we got to get moving now, one way or another, we got to get moving.
But what was it, so is that a yes or no?
If she wants to screen them, that's good.
Okay, okay, that's why, that's why I was kind of going to get there. Okay. Yes?
I did want to mention, and just to the board, you may want to come up with a backup plan should these positions remain vacant for a period of time, there's a labor shortage, right? We've all been hearing about it and experiencing it, our departments have been experiencing it, some of our departments have been vacant for going on two years now, so there's a strong possibility that we may post it many times and not be able to fill it, so with budget season coming up and things of that nature, the board may want to come up with sort of a backup plan, which is what all of our departments are, are required to do if they can't fill vacancy for a period of time.
I think our backup plan is we won't let Dan retire.
Well, Commissioner Krieger.
So our budget's coming up pretty quick, and it may be tough to fill this, so my question would be to Shawna, we have Kim President that has tons of years of experience working as Bob, I would hope we would be able to.
Yeah.
Use her as a sounding board to work with the commissioners to make sure that what's being asked from the different departments are reviewed, so at least I would have some faith in the process.
Sure, of course.
A check and balance.
With Jim's approval, of course, the Finance Department is more than willing, and Kim and all of us are more than willing to help the board achieve their goals through the budget. Budget packets are being prepared to go out today, so the process is getting underway.
And I think Kim and Bob have, and Bob have worked together for years in a great collaborative fashion, so hopefully Kim can still respond to all of the commissioners' concerns about the budget and work with you on making the changes, even, even if we don't have fiscal analysts, so, before you present the budget for your vote.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think your idea for Shawna is a good idea, because I know she doesn't mind hurting people's feelings, especially mine. When it comes to the money, when it comes to money, you're all in, I get it. No, you, you do a great job, but, okay, I think we're all, we're all set, you guys all set? Okay. Oh, we need a motion, we got the motion, we got, yeah, this is discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, any new business? Any miscellaneous? Do I say announcements to you?
Oh, it's just, an announcement, I mean, the last time we were here, the softball girls were going down to East Lansing, and unfortunately, they came up just a little bit short, they were leading 1-0 in the fourth inning, and they ended up losing 2-1 to, what was it, Trend? So, but consolation for the girls soccer team, the club that they lost to number one, Williamson, ended up winning the whole thing, the next two games were 4-0 and 4-0, so.
So that was the game?
It pretty much was the game.
Yep.
That was, that was the game, so.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes, I finally have a bright side of announcement to make, we have a group of athletes at Bangor John Glenn that's involved in some competition, and so Bangor Pom Poms at John Glenn, and what I'd like best if you'd come up and share some of the details on what these girls have been able to achieve, being that I'm a proud parent of a daughter that spent four years in cheerleading, I know the amount of dedication and the work that they put into this to be able to achieve their goals, so.
As a proud parent of a Bobcat too, that graduated in 2019, go Pom Poms, but they did a routine to a song from Pitball that went viral in November, and they have so far, year-to-date, 8.2 million views of this routine they did. Pitball recognized them along with the Rockettes and had put it on their social media, AGT got ahold of them, which is America's Got Talent, they did go out in April and audition, I can't tell you what happened because I'm not supposed to, but they are going to be on America's Got Talent on Tuesday nights, 8:00 PM. We don't know exactly when they're airing, but please watch, we'll know if they're going to go on to the live shows.
So it's Tuesday, that, what?
This Tuesday, tonight, and then all the way through August 2nd.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, go Bobcats.
Well, I know, is that, you know, like, when guys like me and Commissioner Krieger and Commissioner Kuhn were in high school, which was a couple of years ago, the cheerleaders and pom poms didn't work like they do now.
No, they work hard.
Tremendous amount of time in, I mean, and it's, it's pretty impressive what the things they can do now.
It's very physical, too. They won in November also the state high kick routine, too, so that, I mean, it's very, very physical, so they are athletes in what they do, and so, yeah, please watch AGT, Tuesdays at 8:00.
Okay.
I believe those now older volders were very good, had what they did when we were at school. Thank you.
All righty, any more announcements? None. Okay, so we're still working on the, the DHS board, we got to get our legal thing done, we've kind of made the appointment pending that outcome, and we did the library already, and now to October, we got the Land Bank Authority and, and the Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors, and December, the Veterans of Bear Committee,